Can everybody settle down, please? Everybody settle down. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Landmarks, Public Sightings, and Dispositions. At this time, can everybody please silence your cellphones? If you wish to testify, please go up to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk to fill out a testimony slip. Written testimony can be emailed to landyuesttestimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is landyuesttestimony@council.nyc.gov. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach today's. I repeat, no one is to approach today's. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning. Welcome to the meeting on Subcommittee on Landmarks, Public Sightings, and Dispositions. I am Councilmember Camila Hanks, and I am the Chair of this Subcommittee. Today, I am joined by my colleagues, Councilmember Marte, Councilmember Nurse, Councilmember Joseph, and Councilmember Narcisse. Before we begin with today's agenda, I will remind everyone that this meeting is being held in a hybrid format. For members of the public who wish to testify remotely, we ask that you first register online, and you may do so by visiting www.council.nyc/landuse to sign up, and then sign into the Zoom and remain signed in until you have testified. For anyone that's with us today in person and wishing to testify, and if you've not already done so, please see one of our sergeants to fill out a speaker's card, and we will call your name at the appropriate time. For anyone wishing to submit written testimony on the items being heard today, we ask that you please send it via email to landyuesttestimony@council.nyc.gov. Include the land use number and/or project name in the subject line of your email. Video and audio testimony will not be accepted. I will remind members of the public that this is a government proceeding and that decorum will be observed at all times. As such, members of the public shall remain silent unless and until called to testify. The witness table is reserved for people who wish to testify. No video or recording or photography is allowed from the witness table. Further, members of the public may not present audio or video recordings as testimony, but they may submit transcripts of such recordings to the sergeant for inclusion on the hearing record. Okay. So, on today's agenda, we have a hearing on LU 158, 159, 160 in South Jamaica Gateway rezoning, and Speaker Adams and Councilmember Williams, District in Queens, pre-considered land use M-H-A-N-Y, multi-family preservation loan program, in Councilmembers Joseph, Lewis, and Narcisse's districts in Brooklyn. Okay? So, now I'm going to open up the public hearing for pre-considered LU applications brought to New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development for M-H-A-N-Y, multi-family preservation loan program, which includes: the designation of an urban development action area, approval of an urban development action project, disposition of city-owned and approval of an Article 11 tax exemption pursuant to Section 577 of the Private Housing Finance Law for a 40-year exemption from real estate property taxation to facilitate preservation of an affordable housing project. The project is located in multiple neighborhoods throughout Brooklyn. Upon completion of rehabilitation of these four buildings, there will be a total of 12 rental units and one commercial space under the HPD Multi-Preservation Loan Program. Appearing today on this proposal is Nicholas Simmons, Director of Construction and Development; Alessandra Woodman, Project Manager of, I think it's Manny? It's a Hanny? Okay. Like Manny Hanny. So, M-H-A-N-Y for the public's presentation. Carl Hedman, Director of Leveraged Preservation Programs. And those wishing to testify must register online by visiting the council's website at council.nyc.lanuse. Council, will you please administer the affirmation?
Panelists, would you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
I think they have to do that.
Oh, sorry. I apologize. I was doing a lot. Okay, we're gonna try again, and make sure your mic is on. Panelists, would you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
Carl Hedman.
Nicholas Simmons.
Alessandra Woodman.
And do you affirm to tell the truth, and nothing but the truth, in your testimony before this Subcommittee and in answer to all Councilmember questions?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you need an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landyuesttestimony@council.nyc.gov. Now, the applicant team may begin. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Carl Hedman. I'm the Director of Leveraged Preservation Programs at HPD, and I'm here to start off the presentation. Today, this morning, we'll be discussing Tbk 1007, Manny. It's a multi-family preservation loan program project. We can advance the next slide, please. This is just a quick map showing locations of the projects within Brooklyn in the Flatbush, East Flatbush and Canarsie neighborhoods. We'll be discussing the individual properties in the forthcoming slides. So, you can advance the slide, please. The proposed action today, the applicant is the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development. As mentioned previously, these buildings are part of the Multi-Family Preservation Loan Program, MPLP, which designates qualified sponsors to purchase and rehabilitate city-owned, vacant, and/or occupied multi-family and mixed-use buildings in order to create low-to-moderate income rental housing. At closing, the properties will be sold to the sponsor, Manny Mothergass &amp; LLC, for a nominal $1 price per property. The property manager will be Manny Management. And the land use actions today are an urban development action area designation and an urban development action area project, UDOT approval, the disposition of city-owned development sites, so those are blocks 4735, 7922, 5022, 5089, and lots 4322, 10, and 20, respectively. At closing, we're requesting an Article 11 tax exemption for the cluster of these buildings and a 40-year regulatory agreement preserving the affordability. So, you can advance the next slide, please.
Hi, everyone. I'm Alessandra Woodman, Project Manager at Manny Management. The Manny Brooklyn Cluster includes four city-owned buildings with 12 residential units and one commercial space. The addresses are 1073 Yurica Avenue, which is currently occupied, 639 East 87th Street, which is also occupied, 996 East 46th Street, occupied, and 38 Martins, which is vacant. The cluster consists of five occupied units in total, seven vacant units, and one vacant commercial space at 1073 Yurica Avenue. Currently, there's no existing regulatory agreement because these are city-owned buildings. These properties will go through substantial and moderate rehab. Overall, the cluster, it's composed of third-party transfer buildings, MPLP, and a private cluster. In total, we have 13 units and 116, 13 buildings and 116 units around Brooklyn. So, HPD will enter into a regulatory agreement for all of these 13 buildings with substantial rehab with a private loan, city capital subsidy, and light equity. The first building, oh, next slide, please. So, the first building is 1073 Yurica Avenue in Brooklyn in the East Flatbush neighborhood, Council District 45, and Councilmember Farah Lewis. It has two floors, two residential units that are occupied, one that is vacant, and the commercial space, which is also vacant. As you can see in the map, it's located in Yurica Avenue between Tilden Avenue and Beverly The next building is 996 East 46th Street in the East Flatbush neighborhood at Brooklyn, Council District 45, Councilmember Farah Lewis. It has two floors. Both residential units are currently occupied. This is between Farragut Road and Glenwood Road in East 46th Street. Third building is 639 East 87th Street, Canarsie, Brooklyn, Council District 46, Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse. Two floors, one residential unit, which is currently occupied, and between Foster Avenue and, I can't see the name of the other one, Glenwood Road, I guess. Last building we'll talk about is 38 Martins in Flatbush neighborhood in Brooklyn, Council District 40, Councilmember Rita Joseph. It has three floors, six residential units that are all vacant. And this is between, it's very close to Flatbush Avenue and Carlton Avenue.
Next slide, please.
Hi, my name is Nick Simmons. I'm the Director of Construction and Development with Manny Management. I'll be going over the next few slides. The slide that we're gonna be going over now is just a little introduction, brief history on Manny Management. Manny, Mutual Housing Association of New York, which is the acronym for Manny, is a 501(c)(3) non-for-profit. We've been around for nearly 40 years. As you can see on the slide, we have a portfolio of around over 220 buildings, over 3,000 units that are all for low and moderate income individuals and families, and about 10,000 square feet of commercial space across New York City. We're primarily in East New York, Brownsville, East Brooklyn neighborhoods, and South Bronx, but we are also in East Harlem and a little bit in Queens, Jamaica, Queens area. There you go to the next slide. So, could we go one slide back? Thank you. So, Manny's mission is to increase affordable housing for low-income and moderate-income families with a focus on preservation and deep affordability. We aim to improve the way affordable housing for low-income and moderate-income people is developed and operated. We work with building and community residents to get involved with their communities and neighborhoods. Another mission is to improve the community conditions and increase neighborhood involvement. Next slide, please.
So, to give you a summary of the work for this cluster, it will be a substantial rehab to address 38 Martins, which has been vacant for quite some time, and then there'll be a moderate rehab for the other three buildings, 1073 Yurica, 639 East 87, and 996 East 46. Just to give a little context, these buildings are occupied with families that have been there for a long time. There has been a lot of conversation with residents, a lot of engagement, in which they have expressed that they do not want to be relocated. For them, they've lived their whole life, it's their home. So, we changed the scope and worked around them to be able to keep them in place while we do the work. That's what they want, and we'll do it that way. So, like we were saying, it's 12 units across these four buildings, and we're not changing the unit mix. It will be 12 units of affordable housing after our renovations. There's one commercial space at 1073 Yurica, which will be also renovated for any new tenant to move there and then make it their own space based on their needs. There's 10,062 gross square feet of residential space and 810 gross rate of commercial space in total for these four buildings. Existing tenants will be offered a preferential rate, rent, to preserve their affordability. That's really important for Manny and HPD. And for the whole cluster, which is 13 buildings, we'll set a 15% set aside for formerly homeless individuals or families. The scope of work, kind of the highlights of what it includes, if we go to the next slide, please, will be roof replacement, facade work, window replacement, electrical upgrades, boiler replacement, and in-unit repair, which focuses for the mod, rehabs in new kitchens and new bathrooms, as well as new flooring, painting, anything that's needed so it looks and it is brand-new. The construction for the whole cluster, the 13 buildings, is anticipated to last 27 months. We are planning on doing it in two phases, because it's 13 buildings, and that way residents, it will take around 13 months for each phase, while residents are, some in place and some relocated. So, to give you a unit mix, like I said, we are not changing the unit count. We have, from those four buildings, 12 units. There's nine one-bedrooms. There is three two-bedrooms for the total of 12, and that's what it will look like after renovation. If we look at the AMIs, the units that are currently occupied will be a 40% AMI, which is five units, and the vacant units will be a 75% AMI, which is seven units. If we can move two slides, please. So, yeah, that's what I was talking about, the AMI. And here, just to give you an overall of the project, like I'm saying, it's 13 buildings. It's scattered around many neighborhoods in Brooklyn, and we are, it's 116 units in total, and from those, we're looking at almost half of them being at 40% AMI. That's our strong, you know, number. And then, we see a 24 units are gonna be at 50% AMI, 14 units will be a 60%, 13 at 70, and seven at 75, with one super unit. The plan has been to do that tiered, so there's a broader spectrum of residents that could move into those units. And total, like I said, it's 116 units, the whole project. That's it.
Thank you so much. Now, I'd like to recognize some of my colleagues, excuse me, some of my colleagues, if they have any questions or remarks. Councilmember Narcisse?
Good morning, and thank you for being here, and thank you for answering almost all my questions before. This is a great project. The whole idea, we're in a crisis, and keeping housing affordable for those in needs is always a great thing in our city. And in my district, and one other thing, too, you prevent those housing from being, you prevent them from being a eyesore in our community, too, because you're fixing them. And my question is, while the construction is going on, how much involve the tenants are because they're already occupied? Are you keeping them up to date on a regular basis? Is the contractors, I mean, introducing, are you introducing the contractors, whoever doing the construction, with the tenants? And to understand the rule and regulation, what can be done? Are those things are being discussed?
Absolutely. We'll have tenant meetings with our team, HPD, the contractors, and the architects to go through what is the next steps, what is the plan, how does the actual renovation is gonna be with the tenants in place, so they'll feel more comfortable of what's next. So, when we do renovation with tenants in place, we normally work by sectors. So, for example, we're doing the kitchen. We try and leave some space for a temporary kitchen for them, and every day, the contractors work there, and they clean the space after, so residents can be living there in some way comfortably while we do the work.
Okay. My next question is the roofing, because to do a complete roof, how that gonna be working while the person is, the house is occupied?
Yeah, just to answer your last question, we also went to all the residents to get them to sign a tenant layout to make sure that the layout that they're gonna be coming to, that will be eventually built, is something that they're gonna be comfortable with, so that all the residents have been showed what the layouts will look like, and that we try to get all their sign-offs, and I think we did pretty well with that. In regards to the renovations, Manny's bread and butter is doing renovations with tenants in place. The majority of our portfolio is our existing buildings, so they do need to get renovated, and our vacancy is about 2% out of the 3,000 apartments, so it's very low vacancy turnover. So, in order to do a renovation with tenants in place and not to be so disruptive, we try to use a contractor that has experience, so that's the first thought, we're not gonna bid the project out to a contractor that has never worked with a resident in place. Specifically for like a roof, they're gonna look at the weather to make sure they're not doing it during the raining or snowing season, and based off the weather, they will create a schedule, they'll put down a temporary roof, tarping, until the permanent roof could go down. And if there is a case where there is a leak during the construction of the roof, Manny will be responsible for any damages that does happen, because it is construction, stuff does happen. But for the most part, from my experience, I've done maybe about 20 buildings with roofs with residents in place. I've only had one instance like that, and that was just because of freak rainstorm, came out of nowhere. And we do boilers, too. We change boilers with residents in place, give them temporary heating devices, whether that's an in-unit electrical heater, or we set them up with a temporary boiler that you might see when you're driving across New York City that are parked on the street in front of the building with a vent that goes towards the building. So, it's, we work with the contractors, and from our experience, we talk with the residents, and we do the coordinating with the residents. We don't allow the contractors to do the coordinating, because it helps our relationship, and after the construction, it helps us maintain a good relationship going forward after, and we keep it going.
In case the house become not livable, do you have a plan to get those folks temporarily placed in a hotel or something? Is any kind of things like that in place?
Yeah, so, for the four buildings that we're focused on today, so I think the one building that will need substantial is actually the vacant one on 1073 Yurica, so we won't have to relocate anyone.
38 Martins?
No, 38 Martins, sorry, 38 Martins. So, that, it is vacant, so there won't be any relocation. In the portfolio, there is another building that has some structural issues, so we'll need to do some temporary relocating. And how we do temporary relocations when that time comes, we sometimes use a broker to find available apartments that are of the same size bedroom, so they're not downsizing or upsizing. Manny also has buildings in the neighborhood, so when we have vacant units and that are, you know, ready to be rented, we use those as temporary relocation apartments sometimes. And I think for this project, one of the ideas is to work on the vacant buildings first, and then in the case, then those buildings will have vacant units, and if we need to relocate anyone, we could use those buildings, so we wouldn't have to go to the market or a broker.
My last question, was the, how is the condition of those places that occupy now, are they livable for real?
So, we, they, what Manny has done since we've, since the TBT round was designated, I think it was 2018, so it was a very long time ago, we've managed the buildings. So, what we do is we try to, you know, keep it in living order, because the residents still have to pay their rent. So, if there is issues, we do try to take care of them. When it's a big capital improvement, we try to, you know, ask them to be patient, because, you know, the renovations seem to take place. But, you know, if there's a heating issue, leaks, anything, any emergency issues, those get addressed right away. But I think like more cosmetic or like flooring, you can't really do that with a resident in place. So, those stuff, we ask the residents to be patient. You know, some of them are patient, some of them, you know, it's been since 2018, so they're probably, it's time. And understandably, I think they're right when it is time to get the work done.
All right. Thank you. So, thank you, Chair. Thank you, my colleagues.
Thank you so much. Before I recognize Councilmember Lewis, I'd like to recognize that Councilmember Felice and Councilmember Salam are also here. So, now we have Councilmember Joseph for some questions.
Thank you. 38 Martins, you said it was six vacant units?
Correct.
And what are the makeups gonna be? One, two bedrooms?
I believe there are all two bedrooms.
All two bedrooms? Good. And in terms of affordability?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm wrong. Four one-bedrooms, two two-bedrooms.
Four one-bedrooms? And two?
Two two-bedrooms.
Okay. Thank you. And in terms of affordability, will there be a community outreach part?
Yes, we, yes. So, we're open to, for the entire cluster, because this is not the only building that we do need to fill, we will be going to the community, and we are open to recommendations from you guys, if you have any in regards to.
And you said the renovations will, I know it's a vacant, I've seen it, it's in my district, I'm familiar with the property. When I first got in, I kept on asking who owns it, nobody could tell me. They said there was an owner, but nobody knew where. In terms of affordability, we talked about that, and that should be, what are the AMIs for that?
So, those are all vacant, so we're setting all of the vacant ones at 75% AMI?
Why so high? If the median income in Flatbush where it is, it's on Martins between Flatbush and Bedford.
Understood. And, yes, we agree, and don't believe that AMIs really reflect the neighborhood, all of our buildings and all of our neighborhoods, that we feel the same way. However, the project, you know, the amount of work that is needed, sorry, the amount of work that is needed is a lot throughout the cluster. So, what we wanted to do is, for the residents that were in place, that's why we wanted to leave those at 40% AMI, as low as we could try, to make sure that we're not making them rent burden. And then, to, you know, since these are vacant units, we figured it might be easier to, you know, fill them with new residents that, you know, could afford them, and that's what we're doing.
That doesn't come from the neighborhood? If we're really talking about affordability, which is what we're facing right now in this city, it's an affordability crisis, we need to look at the AMI. And that part of the neighborhood, that AMI does not reflect that part of the neighborhood. So, I'm gonna advocate on behalf of my constituent always, to make sure it reflects the needs of the community. If we wanna make sure we're not displacing anyone and we wanna keep folks here, we have to offer them, you don't wanna rent burden, but we also wanna make sure neighbors stay in the communities as well. If we're offering it to the community, it should go to community boards, right? So, let me know if that's something we need to have a side conversation, I'm open for that, but 75 AMI is outrageous.
Okay. No, I understood. We, I think, we talked to our executive director, that wasn't able to make today, it just had an emergency. We are open, you know, to suggestions in regards to setting the AMIs. We, for our portfolio of buildings, we also do have preferential rents for some tenants for cases like this, where we're not trying to rent burden them, or we can't fill the re-units because if the neighborhood doesn't, aren't at that AMI, like you mentioned. So, yes, we would love to.
Definitely have a side conversation on that. Thank you. Because affordability right now is, that's what all New Yorkers are faced across the board. And we don't want none of our residents to be displaced, and we're seeing more and more, and as you may know, more and more families are entering shelters, and I was an educator, so most of my kids, 114,000 kids in the New York City public schools, live in shelters. And that's opening a door for family to enter. So, we really need to look at how we address neighborhoods, not if, we can't do a cookie cutter model for a whole neighborhood, it has to meet the needs of the neighborhood where they are. So, thank you, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Next, I'm going to read a statement from Councilmember Lewis. So, thank you, Chair Hanks, which is me, for allowing me to submit this statement on the record today. I would like to acknowledge today's hearing on the Multi-Family Preservation Loan Program application for Manny Management to oversee the rehabilitation of two properties in my district. I want to applaud Manny for their remarkable work in providing affordable housing across our city. However, we must express, I must express my concerns regarding HPD's recent performance in my district. My experience with HPD has been marked by a troubling lack of communication, coordination, particularly on these two major projects. The Article 11 at Flatbush Gardens suffered an inadequate communications plan with tenants and surrounding community. Additionally, the Bethany Senior Terrace is one of our flagship affordable housing developments was developments, was launched with insufficient outreach and notification to the residents who need it most. It would be a disservice to my constituents to support this project without clear safeguards and assurances from HPD. We need to know how our communities will be engaged in future housing lottery efforts, how current residents will be kept housed during construction, and how we will address issues that may arise during the forty-year regulatory agreement. I look forward to hearing about these assurances today as we assess on how to move forward with this application. Next, Council, is there any members of the public who wish to testify on this item?
Um, yes. There are two members of the public. I got you.
Thank you, this applicant panel is now excused. This first. As a reminder, if I or any council members have questions, witnesses are asked to remain online or stay seated at the microphone after their testimony until they are excused. For those participating online, once you or your group has been excused, following any questions, participant participants may continue to view live stream broadcast of this hearing in the council website. Members of the public will be given two minutes to speak, and please do not begin until the Sergeant at Arms has started the clock. We will now hear from the first panel, which is Alessandra Woodman and Nicholas Simmons.
That was them.
Oh, that was them.
Yeah.
I apologize, those were given.
Pardon me, just please hold.
Okay, we we have no no members of the public signed up to speak.
Sorry. With there being no other members of the public who wish to testify regarding pre-considered LU Manny uh multifamily preservation loan program, the public hearing is now closed. Thank you, everyone. Okay, now I will open the public hearing for LU one fifty-eight, one fifty-nine, and one sixty, the South Jamaica Gateway rezoning, an application by the New York City Department of Housing Preservation Development and several private applicants for zoning map change, a zoning text amendment, and a designation of an urban development action area, approval of an urban development action area project, and disposition of city-owned property. These actions are to facilitate the development of two mixed-use residential community facility buildings containing approximately a hundred and forty-three affordable housing units in Jamaica, Queens, and Speaker Adams' Council District and Councilmember Dr. Williams' District. Appearing today on this proposal is Annabelle Monier, Senior Queens Planner of HPD, Jack Henley, a founder and principal of Fulcrum Properties, Brian White, Chairman of Thomas White Junior Foundation. Those wishing to testify must register online, visiting the council's website at council.nyc. dot forward slash land use. Council, will you please administer the affirmation?
Panelists, would you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record? Check your mic, please. I don't know.
Annabelle Monier.
Brian White.
Jack Heaney.
And do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this subcommittee and in answer to all council member questions?
I do.
I do.
I do.
Thank you. For the viewing public, if you have an accessible version of this presentation, please send an email request to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And now the applicant team may begin.
Thank you and good morning, Chair Hanks and members of the City Council Land Use Subcommittee on Landmarks, Public Sightings, and Dispositions. Um, thank you Chair Hanks, as you mentioned, my name is Annabelle Monier, and I am a senior planner with HPD's Queens and Staten Island Planning Team and the Office of Neighborhood Strategies, and I'm here to present uh the South Jamaica Gateway Rezoning Project today. Um, and I'm joined with by Jack Heaney, um founder and managing principal of Fulcrum Properties, um who is part of the development team for this project, as well as Brian White, uh Chairman of the Thomas White Junior Foundation, one of the nonprofit partners for this project. Um, and we're also joined today in the audience by Kevin Paris, Director of the Queens and Staten Island Planning at HPD, as well as the other members of the development team, um Ira Brown, who is the Director and of Development and General Counsel for the Briarwood Organization, and Bernard Warren, uh Managing Member of Moses Soul Realty, um as well as other uh HPD staff um on this project who are present. Um, and we thank you for the opportunity to present this project today. Next slide, please. This is an application by the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development and the Development Team, which is a joint venture between Fulcrum Properties, the Briarwood Organization, and Moses Soul Realty. And importantly, the nonprofit partners, the Gaudian Fellowship, and the Thomas White Junior Foundation. Pastor Kendra Manigold represents the Gaudian Fellowship and could not make it in person, but is observing remotely. Next slide, please. This application was certified into ULP on May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. The proposed land use actions and proposed project are listed here, and we will go over these later in the presentation. Next slide, please. The majority of this project area, as shown here, was zoned in its current designation of R five D with a C one four commercial overlay as part of the city-sponsored Jamaica Plan rezoning, approved in September two thousand and seven. The Jamaica Plan was a comprehensive planning and rezoning strategy for a three hundred and sixty-eight block area, uh designed to encourage the economic revitalization of downtown Jamaica, as well as encourage the provision of affordable housing while preserving the adjoining residential homeowner neighborhoods. Prior to two thousand and seven, the rezoning area was zoned R four with a C one two commercial overlay, which was the original zoning designation established in nineteen sixty-one, when the zoning resolution of the City of New York was first enacted. Next slide, please. The two HPD-owned lots in the proposed project area were um later included as part of the Revitalizing Neighborhoods New Infill Home Ownership Opportunities Program, or NIHOP, and Neighborhood Construction Program, or NCP, Request for Qualifications, published in twenty fourteen. In twenty eighteen, this development team was awarded the cluster included in South Jamaica, and later brought on their nonprofit partners and worked with HPD to create a separate proposal and project plan that would facilitate the production of more affordable housing, helping meet a stated need in this area. Next slide, please. This slide shows the existing conditions on both sites. The project's objectives are to create a new uh R seven A C one four district with MIH requirements that would allow for approximately a hundred and forty-three units of new low-income or workforce housing units on two underutilized commercial properties where uh no housing currently exists. To provide um worship and office spaces for these two existing nonprofits owners that have been providing worship and social services to South Jamaica for over forty years. And finally, to enhance the public realm along Tuskegee Airmen Way and Guyart Brewer Boulevard with new um streetscaping, including trees and street furniture. And community benefits would include um Community Board twelve Resident Preference for twenty percent of the apartments, expanded community services, and MWBE and local subcontractor hiring. Next slide, please. Once again, the proposed actions as certified on May twenty-eighth are, number one, a zoning map amendment from R four, R five B, R five D, and R five D with a C one four overlay to R seven A with uh no change in the overlay, for portions of block fronts on blocks one zero one two nine and one zero one six one. You can see um the map comparison shown, the rezoning area is highlighted in yellow for visibility. Number two, a zoning text amendment to the New York City Zoning Resolution Appendix F, included inclusionary housing designated areas and mandatory inclusionary housing areas to establish the rezoning area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area. And number three, an urban development action area designation and approval of an urban development action area project for proposed development A, including the disposition of city-owned uh of the city-owned portion of development site A, or one zero block one zero one six one lots three and nine to the developer. Next slide, please. The two development sites for this proposal are shown here. Development Site A is located at one oh six dash oh one Guyart Brewer Boulevard on the eastern side of the street, and comprises Queens Block one zero one six one, lots one, three, and nine. Lot one is privately owned, and lots three and nine are city-owned under HPD's jurisdiction. Lot nine is not uh within the proposed rezoning area. Um, and Site A is the the site that would be subject to the UDAP action, and this site is located in Council District twenty-seven. Development Site B is located at one six two dash oh two Tuskegee Airmen Way on the southern side of the street at the intersection of Union Hall Street, and consists of three privately-owned lots, Queens Block one zero one two nine, lots one, three, and four, and this site is located in Council District twenty-eight. I will now pass the presentation over to Jack Heaney, who will discuss the proposed developments and affordability, and speak a little more on the nonprofit partners.
Thank you, Annabelle. So zooming in on the development sites, Site A, which is the home of Gaudian Fellowship Church, um this will be one hundred percent affordable senior housing, uh seventy-eight units, sorry, seventy-nine units total, contained in a nine-story building, uh that'll be following Ayers zoning rules. Oh, I'm sorry, next slide, please. Thank you. The gross square footage of the Site A is approximately forty-two thousand square feet. The ground floor will be activated by uh Gaudian Fellowship's new home, which will be approximately four thousand square feet on the ground floor and cellar. Uh, interior recreation spaces for the uh senior residents, as well as an outdoor garden space that's adjacent to the project. Um, in addition to the housing units above, there'll be several terraces and interior recreation spaces, um again, for use by the senior residents. Next slide, please. Site B is the home of the Thomas White Foundation. Um, this will follow mandatory or mandatory inclusionary housing zoning, it'll be approximately sixty-six units, uh again, nine stories. The ground floor will be activated by Thomas White Foundation's new home with uh units above, as well as several uh exterior terraces for resident recreation and a rooftop that's accessible as well. The the Thomas White's new home will be approximately twelve thousand square feet on the ground floor and cellar, and there'll be uh parking for approximately seventeen, sixteen spaces. Next slide, please. So gearing back to development Site A, the if this will be one hundred percent affordable through HPD's SAR program, um so all of the residents, all the units will have project-based vouchers. Uh, within this uh mix, there'll be thirty percent of the residents will be set aside for formerly homeless seniors, uh who will be referred to the project through DHS DHS and a nonprofit uh social service provider. Uh, the remaining units will be set at approximately forty percent AMI of income, but again, the project as a whole will be one hundred percent project-based vouchers to ensure that um the rent remains affordable for folks who are primarily on social security income. Next slide, please. Development Site B, which is the Thomas White Foundation's home, uh this will be developed through the NCP program, um so this will be a multifamily mixed-income project. Uh, fifteen percent of the units will be set aside for formerly homeless individuals. The bulk of the units will be set at fifty percent of AMI, and the remaining will be at approximately eighty percent AMI. Um, this will be a mix of studios, ones, twos, and three bedrooms to accommodate larger families in the neighborhood. Next slide, please.
That'll be my, okay. Um, thank you, Jack. Um, this slide is just showing where we are in terms of ULP. Um, the project was reviewed and voted favor- favorably by the Community Board, and I'll point out that the timeline was short in terms of ULP, but this project has um actually been uh in the making for many years, and the development team and the nonprofit partners uh conducted thorough outreach with the community. Um, so the board was pretty familiar with this application um by the time of their vote. Um, thank you to Brian. Um, and the the project uh also received a favorable vote by Queens Borough President Donovan Richards' office, and was approved unanimously by the City Planning Commission on September eleventh. Next slide, please. This concludes our presentation, uh thank you all for your time today.
Thank you so much. Um, I do have one question. Um, the Borough President recommended a thirty percent MWBE contracting goal, does HPD have uh targets for reaching the NWBE goal for contracting?
So both HPD and the developer team and the contractor team who is with us today um intend to meet and exceed that goal of thirty percent. And um we'll be working in partnership, actually, with the Thomas White Foundation. Brian, I don't know if you wanna say a few words about your job training programs?
Yes, uh good afternoon. Uh, the Thomas White Junior Foundation, formerly JCAP Foundation, founded by uh City Councilman Thomas White, uh the late Thomas White, has been involved in community empowerment for over forty years. We are currently providing OSHA training and also uh computer professional training classes to the residents of the community, to help them in a lot of the economic development that is going on in Southeast Queens right now. As a member of the JFK redevelopment project, we are putting people on a list of uh job placement list for the JFK project through that, and also we are working with our developer team to make sure that the members of the community that can meet to help build our projects, both ours and the Gaudian, get the opportunity to do so. So we are reaching out to the community, and we do have outreach program for that and a training program for that.
Thank you, I appreciate that answer. Um, okay, any of my colleagues, if you'd like to? Seeing none, um thank you, this applicant panel is now excused.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this item?
Is there a Mr. Warren who who's here to testify?
No.
Oh, you were with. Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify on that. Are there any other members of the public? There are no members of the public who wish to testify.
Will there be no other members of the public who will wish to testify in LU one fifty-eight, one fifty-nine, and sixty, South Jamaica, Queens Gateway Rezoning? This public hearing is now closed. So that concludes today's business, I would like to thank the members of the public, my colleagues, Subcommittee Council, Land Use Staff, and Sergeant at Arms for all your participation today, this meeting is hereby adjourned.